Good evening and welcome to the September 7th, 2021 Tinsboro School Committee meeting. I'd like to remind you that these meetings are audio and video recorded and we'll start with inter活tions to my left.
I'm Grace Shamu, student representative.
Robert Mullin.
Dustine Puma.
Good evening, Mark Ranko, Assistant Superintendent.
Hi, Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Becky Stanton.
Good evening, Julie Quastucci.
Jeff Boe.
Anthony Terrell.
Gomisina School Business Administrator.
All rise, my flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start with the approval of meeting minutes. I'll seek a motion to approve the June 29th, 2021 budget subcommittee meeting minutes, the August 24th, 2021 school committee meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Any discussion? Fellas in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 6-0-0. Correspondents?
Yes, Madam Chair, in your drive tonight you'll see an invitation from the Tinsboro Housing Authority. They're going to dedicate the terrace to Rick DeLeo on Saturday, September 25th, 2021 at 10:00 a.m. at 130 Coburn Road location. And the reason that was extended to the school committee is because Rick was a six-year, two-term school committee member who served from 1999 to 2005 and he finished his career as a vice chair. He was a good man, he's done a lot for his community, so they wanted to invite the entire committee, any member who can make it to represent Tinsboro School Committee on Rick's behalf. So that's in your drive if anyone can make it.
I have number four, citizen time. Seeing no visitors, we can move on. Share the success. Race.
The first week went great across all the schools. The elementary school welcomed back just over 800 students with 160 of them being new to the school. The returning students were thrilled to be back in the building and they did an amazing job bulking in the new students. The highlights of the students' days were the morning meetings, lunch, and recess, and the students were so excited to reconnect with their friends and their teachers. TES families are encouraged to follow along social media, watch for important updates on the website, and read the weekly smore. Administration and the student leaders look forward to presenting with you later in the month, or next month. At the middle school, the building looked its best after all the work of the custodial and maintenance staff. Teachers had a highly productive first professional day and took time over the last couple of weeks to decorate their classrooms. After a year of being in only one room, the students are getting used to their A/B schedule and moving from class to class. They also had lunch outside and got a chance to run around a little bit. The sports also started up with high participation from all three grade levels, and the upcoming school year looks promising. And then the update on the high school is going to be covered in the reopening presentation.
Thank you. Subcommittee update, there's none at this time. And for personnel, there's none at this time. Moving on to unfinished business.
So, Madam Chair, we'll jump right into the slide. First issue we have is 8A, Superintendent's Goals. As the committee knows, I went over my goals, I think, two meetings ago, and we gave a week for feedback and input, did not really receive any from the committee, so I'm assuming at that point where we're good to go with these goals. So we just need action on the goals tonight to approve them for the school year.
Sure, so I'll seek a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Superintendent's Goals as submitted.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Fellas in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? That carries 6-0-0.
Great, thank you very much. Moving on to 8B Dashboard Template. So this is a first attempt at what a potential dashboard could look like for Tinsboro Public Schools as we move forward this year. You know, the hope was originally that we would move away from the dashboard, but given where we are right now with the mask mandate, with COVID still here, Delta variant certainly sparking a little bit, coupled with the fact that vaccination rates are now a metric that DESI is using to make school model learning decisions, I think it's important that we have some type of dashboard so that the committee knows exactly where we are. So the first piece I want to bring your attention to, circle the top. This is very similar to last year. It's active positive cases, it's cumulative positive cases, as well as students and our staff in quarantine. Unlike last year, this information will be updated once a week. I think we worked very hard last year, 24/7, to keep this as current as possible. It's just not doable at this point. So this will be updated every Friday, 11:00 a.m. The information will be put in there, and that'll be a snapshot of time for Friday at 11:00 a.m. That's where we are. So that's what we're going to do in terms of quarantine and active COVID cases. Moving to the next part. There we go, thank you. So the next item is TPS staff vaccination rate. I just wanted to share with the community, Tinsboro Public Schools staff vaccination rate currently right now, 230 out of 251, or 91% of the Tinsboro Public Schools staff, everyone who's employed at Tinsboro Public Schools is fully vaccinated. We went and broke that out by school. At the elementary school, you'll see that we have 87% fully vaccinated. At Tinsboro Middle School, 94% of the staff are fully vaccinated. Tinsboro High School, 90% of the staff are fully vaccinated. And district-wide personnel, 94% are fully vaccinated. So that information is on the dashboard as well for parents to understand. The next section of the dashboard, excuse me, is the student vaccination rate and staff vaccination rate. But I want to draw your attention to the staff number here, a little caveat right here. If you look at Tinsboro High School right now, you'll see that our staff number represents 82. That is 82 people who work on a regular basis in that school. It does not necessarily mean that's their sole assignment. For example, I would be reflected in that 82 because I work in every school. A shared teacher between the middle school and high school would be reflected in that number. A district-wide maintenance person would be reflected in that number as well. So any people who work regularly in a school are reflected as staff in that school. Okay? So I just want to bring your attention to that first, and it's the same with the middle school at the 81 down below. So if we go to the next slide, please, Dr. Branko. Thank you. As you can see, we know, as it says right there on the, for the DESI guidance, after October 1st, 2021, if a school demonstrates a vaccination rate of 80% or more of students and staff in the school, then vaccinated individuals in that school will no longer be subject to DESI mask requirement. We know that that's out there as a goal or a threshold established by DESI. So to get a sense of where we are in terms of attaining that goal, you can see the math simply breaks out here. Right now at Tinsboro High School, we're at about 58%. These numbers, these vaccination numbers are of, as of last Friday. Now, there's two caveats to understand with the vaccination numbers. That percentage can only go up based on our numbers. So when you get your vaccination, when you go to get a vaccination, one of the final questions is, will you share this information with MIIS, which tracks it? School nurses have access to MIIS information. So a parent would have to check off, yes, they would share that information, and the school nurse could attain that information. So we can attain that information. If a parent chose not to sign off on that consent, we could potentially have students who are fully vaccinated that aren't representing in that number. Additionally, we're learning that the state vaccination systems don't talk to each other. So if a student from Tinsboro went up to Daniel Wepso Highway to get vaccinated, that may not reflect, that will not reflect in the MIIS system. As such, there could be students who are fully vaccinated in New Hampshire or any other state where they potentially got their vaccination that is not reflected in this number. So minimally, minimally, we're at 58% at Tinsboro High School. That number could only go up. Right now at Tinsboro Middle School, you'll see we're at 37% of students and staff. Again, that number can only go up. So what's our plan? Our plan is to put out a voluntary proof of vaccination letter tomorrow. So tomorrow, families will receive from our Tinsboro Health Office a request or an ask if you are interested in sharing your vaccination status. Click on this link, take a picture of your vaccination, and send it in. If you're not comfortable doing that, photocopy it, put it in a sealed envelope, and send it in to your school nurse. If you have any questions about this or the process, feel free to reach out to the school nurses, they're happy to help. So we're going to send this out tomorrow. We know right now, as we look at the numbers, we currently have 395 students at Tinsboro Middle School. We know 99 are fully vaccinated. There's 296 that we just don't know about. So we're going to give those folks an opportunity to submit their proof of vaccination if they so choose. Same thing with the high school, 433 students, we know that 225 are fully vaccinated, 208 unknown. We'll give those parents the opportunity to submit proof of vaccination if they so choose. So tomorrow, there'll be 514 emails going out to these families, the 296, the 208, asking those parents if they would like to share the vaccination status. Again, that's coming from our health office and it'll go directly to our health office. And it'll become, they can look for an email from vaccination@tingsbrowps.org. So before we move on, I'm not going to, you can go back a slide to these numbers. Again, these were, this was a preliminary attempt at a dashboard. I think it captures the information that we're looking for, but I'm happy to answer any questions or respond to any comments about this dashboard.
This dashboard, is this currently up on the Tinsboro Public Schools website?
No, no it is not. No, not till Friday. We hope to go live, we plan to go live this Friday. We will go live this Friday.
Sure.
Yeah. But even then, we'll put the caveat in that these numbers will reflect a point in time.
Correct.
You know, if we have the opportunity to update the vaccination numbers, we will. If we don't, it'll be as of last Friday. You know, our nurses are outstranded of a lot of work to do, so I don't want to burden them with this if we don't have to. We certainly can get the COVID numbers and we'll put those up, those are easy enough to obtain, but yeah, this Friday it'll go live.
It sounds like the information that's given to you has some kind of a range attached so that you're able to figure out the ones that don't have information. Is that true?
No. I get numbers.
Oh, so...
I get numbers. I do not get information, I do not get identifiable information.
Basically, you're sending out a letter to everybody then?
Nope, so I'm not sending the letter.
I'm sorry.
It's coming from our health office, and they know, they have access to this information, the nurses. So they have the ability to drill down.
Okay, oh, I see.
Yeah, no, this is not shared with myself or any of my nurses.
Right, right, but I'm saying that you, there is a portion that you know that those people are fully vaccinated, and then it's the other portion that the health department knows that are not vaccinated, or they're questionable about.
Right, we just don't have the information. There could be.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
They could be vaccinated and chose not to share that information.
Right, right.
They said, right.
Right, right.
So, yes.
Dr. Flanagan, are those the actual active case in quarantine numbers?
No, that's a template just for, just for tonight, exactly.
Only because the other ones had numbers in them and I wasn't sure if those...
Yeah, no, we want to capture that number again on Friday. We try to do it Friday between 11:00 and 12:00. It's going to be live.
Thank you.
I'd just like to point out that, you know, we should really watch these percentages closely as more information comes into the school. We have another meeting before October 1st that's already scheduled. If it looks like things are trending favorably in that direction, then to call an emergency meeting to reevaluate closer to October 1st instead of waiting until that following week could be an option for us.
Absolutely, absolutely. No, I think one last point I'd like to make is, you know, we don't want to, we're trying to keep this as non-identifiable as possible, so we're not going to drill down to grade levels. You know, I don't want freshmen to think that sophomores aren't doing it, or the seniors to think that the juniors aren't doing it. You know, we're a school community, we're a school culture, we're going to keep it together as a school community, and I don't want to get down to a granular level, we're going to identify by grade level. In a small district, you know, it's difficult to do that. It's not the best practice. So we're going to keep things high level, and again, all this information will come in and out of our nurse's office because that's where we keep confidential records and student records. Health records. So that's all I have on proof of vaccination. So parents can look for a proof of vaccination email tomorrow, sorry, let me rephrase that. Parents in grades six and up can look for a proof of vaccination email tomorrow. We will not be emailing elementary parents with this information, not until it becomes readily available for those under 12 years old.
Thank you.
Okay.
New business.
Excellent. So school reopening, so one of the things that we talked about and we're committed to is getting back to our strategy for district improvement. And I think, you know, we spent a lot of time as administrative team this summer, I know Dr. Branko's going to talk about it in a minute, but, you know, I want to remind the community and I want to remind everyone that, you know, we have three big rocks. Our focus remains for the past five years that we're going to meet the needs of all students, that we're going to provide a rigorous and consistent program, and we're going to do everything we can to enhance professional practice in this district. We're committed to that, and we're going to do everything we can to support our students and our teachers to achieve these goals. That being said, our strategy, as we know, was interrupted in March of 2020. So we have refined our strategy for this year. We will be seeking community input later on this year, and that will be revised and overhauled this summer coming up for the '22-'23 school year. So at this time, we'll go to the next slide, and Dr. Branko will provide a little bit of an update on teaching and learning, where we are.
So as part of our comprehensive professional development schedule this year, we are taking a heavy dive into developing an equity mindset. So over the summer, Dr. Flanagan led the leadership team through two really great days during our administrative retreat, where he did some really impactful work around a book entitled "The Equity in Social Justice Education" by Barudy Kofell. He framed the professional development around an equity mindset, inclusionary practices, and what it means to meet the needs of all students. He also took us into a deep dive as we developed and redefined our strategy into how having that equity mindset could impact all of the goals and the priority areas that we have in the school district this year. So we did that work for a couple of days. The principals then met with their leadership teams and sort of took the model that Dr. Flanagan had put out there for them, and they have built a kickoff day tomorrow that's going to happen on the early release day. So they've calibrated, they met this morning, they met last week a few times, so they've calibrated their work, so each school is going to have their own unique professional development around this concept of developing an equity mindset, what that looks like in the classroom, what it looks like around the school building for our school and district-wide culture. And then at our staff meetings this year and at other professional development sessions this year, we'll continue to build upon this. So this is just the foundational building blocks tomorrow that will lead to this work across the school year this year. So really proud of the work that we're about to embark on. Superintendent really kind of teed it up for everybody, and then we're going to hopefully just hit the ground running starting tomorrow.
So if we go to the next slide, just, you know, a 10,000-foot view, it's important, I think we need to really emphasize this, there's a difference between equality and equity. Equality is providing everyone the same thing, and we can see by this simple visual representation, providing everyone the same opportunity isn't necessarily going to provide enough for all students. So regardless of a student's academic, cultural, physical, social, emotional deficit and/or strength, it's our goal as a district and as educators to meet all kids where they are and provide them all the individual needs of all our learners, meet all the needs of all our learners, and meet them where they are. So we need to understand and get to know our kids, and we need to know what they bring to the classroom each and every day. To say, "I'm going to do this for all kids," we know that there are going to be kids who need more, who need less. We need to understand where our kids are and provide them what they need so that they can all be successful. That's our goal this year. We have a strong, strong focus on an equity mindset. So that's the work that was done this summer. That's the work that we will continue throughout the year with our leadership team and our teachers, and it is all focusing on improving outcomes for students in the classroom through teaching and learning by understanding what each and every one of our kids needs. So that being said, we do have Mr. Ogden and Ms. Trainor here tonight to talk to you about Tinsboro High School and the reopening of THS.
Good evening, thanks for having us tonight. We're excited to be here, especially after kicking off the year next, last week. It's been a great first four days. We've seen you a little sooner than usual, but that's all right, we've got plenty to talk about. But it's been so great to have every kid back in the building. There's an energy and excitement that you can feel the second you walk in, walk into classrooms, kids collaborating, working together again, getting that sense of normalcy. So it's truly been a great first few days. To start our presentation, we'll actually go to Grace because Melissa's stuff for sharing the success is in this presentation, so she's just going to talk about the start of the school year for her.
So first of all, I personally had a really good first week back with almost normal school. I liked it a lot better than last year, and I saw the vice chairman, I got to see all my friends that made the home.
And then, like, as a senior going into my senior year, the thing that I'm most excited for is probably our last homecoming, just because especially we didn't get to do that last year. So that's just another example of, like, being back in the classroom, being back in the school.
Thank you. So we kicked off on the 25th with our senior sidekicks and freshmen who come in orientation. Our freshman class, she has 101 students. We had about 85-plus students attend this event this fall. Mrs. Gustafson and the 20 senior sidekicks put together an event that included tours, activities, really trying to get students comfortable. So the first day they walk in, they knew what was going on, they knew what to expect a little more.
Today, we held class elections. All of our candidates did an awesome job with their speeches, we're very proud of them. We were able to have the voting before the end of the day, so the outcome is up here. So congratulations to all of our new class officers, including Grace. Congratulations, yes. Student Services, it has been busy up in Student Services. Our school counselors have spent the past few days working with students, making necessary schedule changes, as well as helping transition students back into the building full-time. In the upcoming weeks, they are going to be meeting with our seniors to talk about their post-graduation plans, as well as helping them with their college applications. We are excited to invite college representatives back into the building this year, where our juniors and seniors can sign up to meet with any of these college representatives right through their Naviance account, which is a great time for students to be able to get to know a little bit about a college or university that they might not be too familiar with, as well as making that connection with that college rep. Dual enrollment. This year, we have partnered with Middlesex Community College to pilot a dual enrollment program at Tinsboro. What that means is that we offer courses at Tinsboro High School that have been approved through Middlesex Community College, so eligible students will take a course at Tinsboro and are able to earn college credit. In order for these courses to be approved, our teachers need to become approved adjunct professors through Middlesex, they need to apply through Middlesex, and as well as have their syllabus approved. So right now, we have five courses that are approved with a total of nine sections. So now that the course, the classes, the course schedules have pretty much stayed consistent, at the end of this week, I'm going to be going into each one of these classes and speaking to all of the students that are enrolled in these classes, let them know about dual enrollment, and if they're eligible, give them the appropriate paperwork so they can sign up if they want to register. And AP scores, I believe all of you have access to our mean AP scores that we provide you every year. Just to give a quick overview, we've had a total of 123 AP exams administered this past May in a total of 12 subject areas. Out of these 12 subject areas, nine of the subject areas, the mean scores were three or higher, and eight had a mean score above the state average. So coming out of a difficult year last year, we're definitely very pleased with our AP scores, but it's something that we always continue to look at and improve each year.
Once again, we have many clubs and activities running, which are all student-driven by student interest. You can see the list there, they continue to grow each year, some have gone away for a little bit and come back as it is students that want to be involved with that. We have a number of students that also want to introduce some other clubs, and they're just trying to get groups together, and we'll find them an advisor, and we'll go from there.
One thing, Jeff, hold there for one second, please. You know, the way that our contract or the TTA contract is structured is that we have baselines of established salaries stipends that go with any kind of club that's out there. So I think one of the things that you should pride yourself on, and I know you do, is the fact that if kids want to do something, if they approach Mr. Ogden, he's going to find them an advisor, he's going to get the opportunity to get, and these kids are going to have the opportunity to do something in school. I think, given where we were last year, I would certainly encourage you to get out there and see how kids want to come into school and stay in school and participate in different activities and clubs and really promote it, because I think it's a great opportunity, it's a great skill, and I think our kids really feed off each other. So I encourage you to really promote those like anything this year.
Yeah, and a great example of that last year was our esports club. It was only the second year of it, and it jumped from six kids to 40, partly because kids were looking for things to do, but it's just continued to grow with that, so it got that boost, which is great to see. Grace mentioned it, and we're all excited for it. We will have homecoming the last week of September. I know, I have tons of ideas, and we will make it a fantastic week with, I've heard so much about them missing it, and I hear how much it means to the students here, so we will make sure that is a week that they definitely remember. And then finally, Ms. Palumbo's not here, she's pulling triple duty basically, from AD to dean to field hockey coach, so we tried to give her some time when she can get it. But we do have a full offering of fall athletics this year. Everything's outdoors except for cheer, so cheer's the only one that does have to wear a mask when they're indoors. There are a total of 208 athletes participating in the JV or varsity level, 147 for the high school, and then 61 for the middle school. That does not include the middle school teams, as those are still coming together, they usually start during this week, so.
If I can make a point to that too, Jeff, just one second. You know, I think it's important that the community realizes, you know, Ms. Palumbo posted for field hockey coach three months ago, and we realized our field hockey coach wasn't coming back. In the past three months, we've had zero applicants. So it's important that we understand that our coaches work very hard, and we need to be sensitive to that, we need to recognize the hard work they do. It's not easy, it is not easy to find somebody who's available at 2:00 every day and is willing to commit 10 to 12 weeks for $4,000. It's very difficult. So I appreciate and want to thank Ms. Palumbo for stepping up, and I want to appreciate and thank all of our coaches, because it is such a time commitment, and we really do appreciate everything they do for our kids.
We'd be happy to answer any questions or talk about anything further that we have added.
Well, thank you for coming. It's always great to see the list of all the different activities that are going on in the school and how it's evolving over the years. It was especially important to hear about homecoming. I know that was something, like, I heard a lot of feedback last year how that was missed, so I'm excited to hear more about homecoming. And Grace, I'm sure you'll have a good review for us on how homecoming goes this year. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Moving on to 9B. For item 9B, Tony and I will need to recuse ourselves, so we'll step out and hand it over to Ms. Gustucci.
So Ms. Vice Chair, 9B Unit A contract, as you know, we worked diligently over the summer. Ms. Gustucci, Mr. Boe, Ms. McManal, part of the negotiations subcommittee, and they worked tirelessly with the Unit A. We're very pleased with the progress we made, we're very pleased with the collaborative effort we made, and I think in, was it May to July, in about three months, we were able to hammer out an agreement, a deal that we feel is fair for both sides. So this has been in the drive for several weeks, so we've not received much feedback. The committee's been kept abreast of this along the way in executive session, so the only thing to do now is take action. I will say that the Unit A Teachers Association did support this and voted affirmative on Teacher Day contingent upon school committee approval. So if it's approved tonight, I will meet with the co-vice president of the union, and we will go through the language and update the contract and bring it back for signature.
Awesome. I would like to seek a motion to ratify the Unit A collective bargaining agreement with the Tinsboro Teachers Association for the period September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2024, and to authorize myself, the vice chair, to sign the final agreement on behalf of the committee.
I'll make a motion. In a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? That passes 6-0-0?
4-0-0.
Oh, I'm sorry, we lost two. 4-0-0.
Excellent, thank you for that. Ms. Ogden, cue invite.
Yeah.
Community members back.
So we'll get to 6-0-0.
So Madam Chair, we're now at 9C.
Right, thank you. I'll seek a motion to ratify the Unit D collective bargaining agreement with the Tinsboro Teachers Association for the period of September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2024, and to authorize me, the chair, to sign the final agreement on behalf of the committee.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Is there any discussion?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
That carries 6-0-0.
Excellent, thank you, everyone. Particularly thank you to the negotiation team for a lot of nights out this summer, we appreciate it. So, Madam Chair, going on to communication and questions on the slide deck, that's the last thing I had. Oh, I'm sorry, you're right, homeschool applications.
The homeschool applications reviewed for 2021-2022 school year. Do I read all of them? Okay. Heather and Christopher Black, students in grades 2, 3, 4, 7, 9, and 11. Emily Claussen and Christopher Briggs, students in grade 5. Melissa and Alfred Gilmet Jr., student in grade 2. Angelina and Corliss Lambert, student in grade 2. Michelle and Chris McNally, students in grade 5, 8, and 11. PJ and Jill Mercier, students in grades 11, 9, and 3. Brenda and Lloyd Mosman, students in grades 10 and 11. Thang and Crystal Pham, student in kindergarten. Kenneth and Kristen Russell, student in grade 8. Natasha Valdez, student in grade 1. Lydia and Adam Shaw, student in grade 1.
Excellent. Madam Chair, before we move on to finance, I just want to draw everyone's attention to the upcoming school committee meetings. We have a busy week in two weeks. We have a tri board meeting on the Monday, the 20th, to talk about capital planning and talk about the middle school building project, as well as the safety buildings in town. Then we have a regular school committee, and then a school building committee the following night, and then we're back on our regular SC managing. This is all pending, us not needing an emergency meeting at some point in the end of September. So we'll just watch the percentages as they go, and if we need to call a school committee meeting, we will at that time.
Great, thanks.
Excellent.
All right, moving on to 10, finance, Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There were nine bill warrants presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all back and approved. In your drive is the list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payroll, nothing tonight. We'll do some catch-up at your next meeting. And also in your drive is the final FY '21 school committee budget spending. School committees in the state have always had the ability to move funding between line items, just due to the volatility of your budget and students moving in and out. Auditers always request that the school committee just acknowledge the final spending by a vote at the end of the year. So the report is in the drive, and at this point, I'd seek a motion to approve your final 2021 spending as presented on that report.
I'll make that motion. One second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? That carries 6-0-0.
Thank you.
Is there any other finance? Nope, all right. Moving on to school committee discussion, Grace, do you have anything?
I'm good.
I have nothing tonight.
I'm good, thank you.
I'm all set, thank you.
All set, all set, thank you.
All set?
I just have one thing, I do want to thank Grace and all her teammates, as well as all the high school kids that participated or volunteered for the block party. I understand Mike Knight did reach out and congratulate the effort put forth by the Tingsboro High School students, and some middle school students, I believe, as well. Said the kids are phenomenal, so thank you to all of our students who spent time volunteering, we really appreciate it. And thank you to certainly Allison Page and Mike Knight for another great community event, appreciate that as well.
And I'd just like to thank the administrators from the high school for coming tonight and giving us an update.